Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting for May 24th, 2018 of the Citrus Heights City Council. And with that, would you please join us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Van-- oh, it's Ms. Tillery. Would you please call the roll?
Of course. Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Slowey.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bruins.
Present.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned at webcast at www.citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replay is on Monday, May 28th at 9:00 a.m. and on Wednesday, May 30th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. And with that, let's approve the agenda.
Move approval.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
The next item is Presentation Item 4, National Public Works Week: Recognition of Public Works Staff.
Mayor and councilmembers, I am Stu Hodgkins, your city engineer. Tonight, this, two weeks ago, you approved a, an acknowledgement of our National Public Works Week, and that actually falls this week. And tonight, we would like to recognize our staff as part of that process. National Public Works Week, as you can see on the poster, our theme, our motto for this year is "The Power of Public Works." And what we'd like to do tonight is to acknowledge the power of our department. And so what I'd like to do is ask that our various staff members come up and be recognized. Unfortunately, they couldn't all be here tonight. There are many various eighth grade promotions and other things going on that have prevented some of us or some of our group from attending. And I'll, I'll read off names as we go. So we have Michelle Sario, who is our community center, one of our community center technicians, Darcy Carpenter, also a community center technician. We have Chris Myers, who is our facilities and grounds manager. Kelly Cunningham is one of our program assistants in general services. Kathy Abarka is our newest program assistant in general services. We're happy to have her onboard. Freedom Morales is our engineering technician in general services. Brian Rowe is our field inspector, basically a maintenance inspector, too, for our department, and also a very new employee for us, and we're happy to have him onboard. Of course, Mary Poole, operations manager extraordinaire, has done many things, as you all know, over the years. Armando Velazquez, who is our field maintenance supervisor, and you can tell by the blue shirts, the guys that do all the, the dirty work in the field, they really make stuff happen out there, and we appreciate it. And of course, Regina Cave, who is our other operations manager and actually works with a very big focus with Armando and Brian and our other contract maintenance staff to make sure that our city is functioning out in the field. Of course, I have to mention our director, community services director, who runs the show for all of us, Rhonda Sherman, who's standing over. She's not going to get away from this, I'm sorry. So I want to acknowledge all of them. Regina has another quick picture that we took Creek Week, which was kind of fun. Armando made sure we all had Creek Week t-shirts, and so that's a good chunk of our group up there acknowledging the work. And I'm going to leave the rest up to Regina.
Good evening, council. In addition to it being Public Works Week, as last week we had advised council that we were very fortunate this year that not one but two of our staff members within general services have been recognized for their outstanding performance as professionals in the public works industry. One of our staff members, Leslie Blumquist, who is our senior civil traffic engineer, she was not able to be here this evening again for an eighth grade, or, excuse me, kindergarten graduation. However, nonetheless, her efforts in helping to bring Citrus Heights up to par with innovation in our technology and in our engineering with our traffic and our signals and really having an impact regionally, she was acknowledged and recognized throughout the region last week. Additionally, our very own Stuart Hodgkins was also recognized as, as a professional, as a city engineer. And Stuart was recently promoted to our city engineer after being here with the city of Citrus Heights since 2002 as our point person for all of our transportation projects. He is our steward, hence being steward. He is very much so mentoring all of us, not only as non-engineers, but as engineering staff as well. And so we wanted to recognize Stuart with his award, and we're hoping that Mayor, you can come down and present it to him as well.
Sure. Why don't we all go down there for a picture?
Sure.
Congratulations, Stu. And I know we call you general services, but more specifically, you are, in my heart, public works. Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
The next item is Presentation Item 5, Annual Report from Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council.
Good evening.
All right, let me make sure I got this on. Mayor and council, thank you so much. My name is John Krueger. I'm Executive Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today, and again, for our partnership this last year. And what I would like to go through is a very brief presentation on the organization, what we are, again, just really briefly, the goals of the organization was to leverage public dollars with private money to achieve the goals of improving our economy by attracting high-wage jobs, by attracting a diverse economy into the region. And we do that with partners like yourselves. We, we can't do that in a vacuum. We do that currently with six county partners and 13 cities within those counties. Right now, that's about 32% of our members on our board by, by number are community partners, but it's only about 21% of our, our funding. So the idea was to have about three or four to one leverage of, of public dollars from the private sector to accomplish our goals. We have continued to do that. We, we will continue to look, to move forward with that kind of funding strategy. We think it's important for the private sector to see the public sector communicating the same goals together. So we talk about improving an economy. We talk about doing it in partnership together. It isn't a private sector goal of making this a better economy if, but for the communities. And it isn't a, the community partners trying to make this a, a better, a better community and a better environment, but for the private sector. This is a collaborative effort between the two, getting together at our board meetings to discuss how we're going to make this a better economy. What we've done last year, and we, we do have very concise goals. We really look at jobs. We look at wealth generation in the community. And by wealth generation, I don't mean all just high-wage jobs. I do mean a diversity of jobs, but we talk about wealth generation. We have brought with the 14 locates that we have so far this year, we announced two more before the end of this year, so we should have 15 or 16 locates, which are what we call companies that decided to, to expand into the greater Sacramento area, that have created about $96 million in new annual payroll. So when we're looking at our community partners, when we're looking about residents from Citrus Heights where they have their jobs, how they earn their money, we've helped to bring with your partnership $96 million a year in new annual payroll to our community. And that means our retail is, it has more money to, to have as disposable income with that $96 million. So we've hit all of our goals. The goals range from, the lowest one is 111% of goal. We have almost 80 new companies that we worked with so far this year that we have helped them understand that the greater Sacramento region would be a good, good opportunity for them to explore. We've hit 127% of our actual locate number, 222% of our payroll number, and 118% of our actual job count number, which will go up by the end of this year. So we're very happy to have been able to do that in, in partnership with Citrus Heights. And part of what we're doing, when we, when economic development is talked about, often they think about business attraction, they think about Google, when are we going to have Facebook set up shop here? But what we do splits into two primary buckets of, of work. One, it is product improvement and sales. We sell our community to, to companies considering on where to put new jobs, and we work with our partners to develop a better economy, to develop a better place to sell to those companies. And some of the things that we've done so far this year, we worked with Regional San about a year and a half ago and talked to them about impact fee reduction. One of our larger, some of our larger projects had gone to Regional San, and, and they had impact fees that were incredibly high and no real way to partner with that company in order to bring those fees down, to make it cost-effective for the company to locate in greater Sacramento. Regional sanitation looked at all the numbers that we provided and actually have an incentive program for development in greater Sacramento where they can reduce those fees or eliminate some of those fees to make it cost-effective for these companies for job creation to happen in greater Sacramento. So they're looking at what we're trying to say, reduce the costs, bring jobs, bring ongoing usage of the sewer system, and have income that way as opposed to trying to front loan income and impact fees. We're also doing that with permit simplicity programs, a streamlined program called PASS. PASS is a regional standardization program so that all the architects on the private sector side and the public sector, building, planning, plan check officials, understand that they're going to get the same things over and over again. Decreases the amount of time it takes, how many reviews it takes to get a building plan through, and making it faster to go through the process, limiting the amount of time it takes and reducing the cost of getting building permits through. And fee deferral programs in, in general, we're working with in the jobs bill. We need to have a state program that can evaluate the impact of regulation and what we're trying to do with the state from a, from a business development, business attraction perspective. So this is what we've continued to do this year, will continue to do in the next year. Specifically, in, in Citrus Heights, we've, we've worked with many of you, and I think, again, had a tour again today, you know, three opportunities that we really believe we have within Citrus Heights to work with you together on in the next year or two. Obviously, the Sunrise Mall, I think from an out parcel development, has a real job development perspective capability in it. We want to work with the city on how we help Sunrise Mall development actually flourish and become a job creator. Employment corridor development, we have a, a project that we're working on with the owners on both sides of the freeway along the I-5 corridor, from the freeway, from the airport to downtown. What we learned from the development of a freeway corridor, we can implement here in Citrus Heights, specifically around Auburn Boulevard. And I know Barry Broom, our CEO, president CEO, was out today with city staff touring around, looking at what potential impact we could have along that employment corridor. And then community development, what do these programs like the impact fee, the fee deferrals, regional sanitations, costs reduction, how does that help us help the city of Citrus Heights to build out, build jobs, build opportunities for the constituents of, of Citrus Heights? That's the primary focus that we're going to have. I know that was extremely brief on what we did, but I wanted to make sure that I had time for any questions, if, if there were any. Really appreciate the partnership that we have with the city of Citrus Heights. Your staff is fantastic, Rhonda, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Devin Rodriguez is fantastic. We really love working with her. So it's, it's been a pleasure, and I, I hope the partnership continues. Thank you very much.
Questions?
No questions, but just a comment. So thanks, John. I mean, I think G-Sec, yourself, Barry, you guys are all doing a good job. And I knew when we joined you, you know, the reality is we are a built-out city. So if you, you know, outside of Sunrise Mall, obviously, we have to get on the same page as the owner does over there, but, you know, I never really, by joining you, expected to see this great job center created in Citrus Heights. But, you know, it's a regional entity, 41 CEOs, 19 cities, all working to the same common goal, you know, bring new jobs and companies here and people, they got to live somewhere. Citrus Heights is affordable. We participate in lots of different county tax pools, so, you know, we benefit that way. But I think it's probably one of the better amounts of money we spend every year because I, I do think anything that happens within the region ultimately spills over to Citrus Heights. So again, thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it. The only thing I will say in looking at your goals, those are great numbers, but my line of work, banking, when you go over your goal by 20%, you got to bump that goal up. So I'm sure the board will be talking next year.
Yeah, yeah, we have a internal goal, and we, I don't share this often with the board, and, but obviously, you're here today. We will be going up by about 14 and a half percent every year, which means a doubling every five. So, you know, we started off, you know, pretty comfortable in, in terms of what has been happening in our region historically, and, and what do we think we can actually do, and how can we keep building on that? So I think eventually, in a couple of years, we won't be at 20, 30, 40% over our goal.
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
John, you did bring up the PASS program for expediting permits, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank one of our other partners, Metro Fire, for actually bringing an employee in-house to Citrus Heights to help with expediting permits and use, use permits, building permits, things like that. So that's one of the good things that's come out of this, and I'd like to thank Metro Fire.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, as long as you can bring as many of your partners together to the table for the same goal of making it a little bit faster, a little bit easier to get these jobs done, the faster you can, you can change and grow as a community.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate the report. Okay, next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Mr. Fox, would you like to lead us off tonight?
I can do that. Okay, since our, since our last meeting, one of our togoes here in town on Greenback had a grand reopening, celebrating, I believe it was 20 years of service to our, our community, and a great time with those folks. The Java Cherry Coffee on, well, I'm drawing a blank.
Auburn.
Van Muren.
No, Auburn, on Van Muren off of Auburn, hosted a coffee with the council member. I went over and spent a couple of hours with them, and it actually turned out to be very interesting to the folks that we talked to, and I spent some time just giving them the opportunity to ask questions, and it worked out very well. And I think city manager's office and the staff are, are providing me with the information things I needed as I met with the folks there. Metro Fire had a two-by-two on, with our meeting this month regarding our work with Metro Fire and with the planning and how things are going. And I'm pleased to say Metro Fire is, and our partnership is a very good partnership, and it's working very well for us. We had Sue Frost's community meeting, which was well-attended this month over in the community center. I think that her rescheduling it the way she has, has opened it up to a larger group of folks to attend, and except for one of our neighborhood associations, it doesn't conflict with anybody else's schedule. So she's done a very good job with her staff at making that work for our community. We had our strategic planning retreat, which all of us attended. I'll allow the mayor and, to address that more because it's something that I think he should be doing, addressing us in terms of those. Today, I went over to Cambridge Elementary School, and they have a community reading time where people from the community go over, sit down with students, and actually read to them. And I was fortunate enough to meet with a couple of fourth-grade classes. I had forgotten how much fun fourth graders can be and how crazy they can be in terms of questions and activities and imagination. It was a great time. And then this evening, Perko's grand opening, where the old Denny's was on Greenback and Sunrise, Perko's has opened. Met with a family ownership there, three brothers and the father. Three brothers have boughten out the, the father in terms of the business. Father's semi-retiring, but he's working with them to make it a go. They have really done a wonderful job at remodeling that facility. Our staff did a great job in facilitating their remodel and their opening schedule by getting them through the planning and process. So thank you to all the staff for that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you. I'll just echo what Mr. Fox just said about Perko's. It's pretty remarkable, you know, we had Denny's there, and it was there for, good Lord, at least 40 years, I think. And it was sad to see it go away, but get yourself down there because what they've done with the, the building and the restaurant and, and, and what their, their story, like Al mentioned, the kids taking over, and it's, it's a pretty neat thing. And so get down there, and I, you know, I just want to also say, that's just another reflection, I think, of, of what's going on in Citrus Heights. You know, we've seen a restaurant explosion pretty much over the last few years in the Sunrise area, mainly between Greenback and Madison, and I think it's just a reflection of our city, that we're, we have a, a good economic vitality. There are sometimes rumors out there that, that indicate that somehow it's different than that, and I don't know where those come from necessarily, but I think if you just look at that perspective, we wouldn't have all of these restaurants coming in and all of this remodeling going on if we didn't have strong economic vitality. So I'm very glad to see that. Thank you, sir. That's it.
Are there, Mr. Slowey?
Thank you. So I know Al mentioned the SAC Metro two-by-two on the 16th, but if I could ask the city manager to ask Catherine Cooley to follow up. They indicated they were going to send us their stats. I never saw them unless you got them.
I don't believe so. Thanks for tipping us off on that. We'll, we'll get those from them.
Yeah, it's just, I'm always amazed at how many calls for service that we get here in town. I mean, it's, it's in the thousands, and it used to be about 80% medical. They're saying now it's about 90% of their calls are medically related. I guess as we all get older, I guess that's good that they're responding to us. The 17th, SACOG had their meeting. Really, the only big announcement out of there was the electric bike share was launched in Sacramento. Probably not something we're going to see in Citrus Heights, but I think it's actually a good thing for Sacramento. The 19th, Councilmember Daniels and myself attended the fundraiser over at the Veterans Center on Sylvan. Pretty decent turnout. Talked about the strategic retreat. You're going to mention that, Mr. Mayor. Today, the library board met, approved a budget, which I think I mentioned last time, included $2 million for a renovation for the Sylvan Oaks Library. In addition, they're going to add one more day of service at Sylvan Oaks, so starting July 1st, instead of being open only five days, it will be open six days a week except for Sunday. So they're adding another nine hours over there. So I think that's great. Two other quick things, the SAC mosquito vector board, whatever they are, the people who track the mosquitoes, did the first dead bird was found that tested positive for West Nile virus over in Del Paso Heights. So as we come into the weekend, even though I know we're expecting some rain, just remember dusted on is the time that they bite the most. So make sure you either spray or cover yourself or do whatever. And then lastly, this Monday, over at Sylvan Cemetery in honor of Memorial Day, the local chapter of the, what's it, Veterans Group, what?
American Legion.
American Legion, thank you. Will be hosting their service 10:30 if you want to walk with them around the, in a ceremony around the cemetery. Otherwise, the service starts 11 o'clock, usually goes an hour. So hope to see some of you there. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice Mayor Bruins.
Thank you. We did have a Regional San meeting yesterday. It was very short, mainly just to prove the budgets for this upcoming year, and we were introduced to some new staff that had been hired. Also, last week, we had a Centerize Reckon Park two-by-two meeting, and some of the subjects that we talked about were, we hadn't met in a long time, so we had, we had a pretty good interchange, was the, the, talking about the purpose of the, the impact fee and how that's used, kind of to, Director Sherman talked about that, to remind us all how, why those fees are, are collected on new construction and, and how they're used throughout the community to better our parks. We also talked about putting in a security camera system at Rush Park that's going to take place. So a couple cameras are going to go in, possibly a third, which will help to reduce vandalism and, and some of the activities that go on there that we don't want to see go on there. And then I'm excited about the Electric Greenway. This is the multi-use path that we are going to be, or trail that we're going to be developing. And it's called that because it kind of follows the route of smud easements there by the electric. But it's going to be a phenomenal asset to our community once it gets built and connects some of our, our other trails and provides a, a way to walk, bicycle, get around our city that we don't have today. And then we talked about some of the future projects that we could be coming down, and one of the things that surprises me is, I guess there's this insurgence, or, I don't know if it's a resurgence or just a new resurgence, of pickleball. I personally have never played pickleball in my life, but it is taking over, some of our tennis courts are being repurposed for that. And so those are kind of some of, those are the things that we talked about, kind of some of the fun things that go on in the community. And then also, this week, we had a, actually, last week, we had a PAL Board meeting, and July is going to be a very impactful month for our kids, so go on the PAL website and you'll get more information. But on the 21st of July, we're going to have our Second Annual Trap Shoot. So if you like to do trap shooting, then be sure and look at that. Then that's a Saturday, then later that Saturday, and into Sunday, we've got the community campout for the whole community, and PAL has a section of that as well. And then following that, on Monday through Thursday, PAL is hosting the extreme sports camps for kids at San Juan High School. So we have back-to-back-to-back events, and I guess maybe we just get out of our system altogether for the summer, but a lot for kids to do, and, and I know parents appreciate that, and it takes a lot of police volunteerism to get this, these programs off the ground. So very grateful to our police department for participating in that as well. And I just wanted to say a final word on what Al talked about, which was the reading day at Cambridge today. That was so much fun. I never knew there was a book called The Three Little Wolves and the Big Mean Pig, but there is. And so third graders and first graders, for me, and the other book that I got to read was The Cinderella Story from the Perspective of the Mouse That Became the Footman. So it's out there. Anyway, it was a nice way to start the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanie. For myself, a week ago, Monday, I attended the Regional Transit Meeting, and we discussed the fiscal year 2019 operating capital budgets. It was open for public comment. We'll have more public comment on June 11th at that meeting. And we declared our intent to sell some surplus, surplus property, and we received an offer for some property at Calvine and Aubrey Drive. Let's see, on the 17th, did the opening remarks for our senior fair that's led by Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa and the Neighborhood Associations. Great job. That was held at our community center, and it was well-attended by our seniors. So it was a fun event. Everybody mentioned the strategic planning retreat. I was going to defer and let the city manager and her department reports brief us a little bit on, on what we came up with. And today, I attended the Army's Northern California Recruiting Battalion Citizens Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful. And it's all about educating our educators about the opportunities. The Army is not just about pulling triggers. There's hundreds of, of jobs to support each soldier, from, you know, medical technicians to cooks, electricians, carpenters, and so it's all about some of the job, job and job training possibilities that the Army provides and getting That was so much fun. I never knew there was a book called The Three Little Wolves and the Big Mean Pig, but there is. And so, third graders and first graders for me. And the other book that I got to read was The Cinderella Story From The Perspective Of The Mouse That Became The Footman. So, it's out there. Anyway, it was a nice way to start the day. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. For myself, a week ago, Monday, I attended the regional transit meeting, and we discussed the fiscal year 2019 operating capital budgets. It was open for public comment. We'll have more public comment on June eleventh at that meeting. And we declared our intent to sell some surplus property, and we received an offer for some property at Calvine and Auberry Drive. Let's see, on the seventeenth, did the opening remarks for our senior fair that's led by Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa and the Neighborhood Associations. Great job. That was held at our community center, and it was well-attended by our seniors. So, it was a fun event. Everybody mentioned the strategic planning retreat. I was going to defer and let the city manager and her department reports brief us a little bit on what we came up with. And today, I attended the Army's Northern California Recruiting Battalion Citizens Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful. And it's all about educating our educators about the opportunities. The Army is not just about pulling triggers. There's hundreds of jobs to support each soldier, from, you know, medical technicians to cooks, electricians, carpenters, and so it's all about some of the job, job and job training possibilities that the Army provides and getting into our schools and at least informing our kids what's available out there. And with that, Jeannie, every time you mention Electric Greenway, I think of that song, Electric Avenue. It's stuck in my head. And that concludes council comments. So, if we could move on to the next item, I'd appreciate it.
The next item is public comment. Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with thirty minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial thirty minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Jennifer. First speaker is David Warren. David, you'll be followed by Sue Stack.
Excuse me, the winds are blowing and the pollen is flying. There's nothing that can be done to stop that. The reason I'm here tonight is because I'm very concerned about the lack of action by the city council. In December, the city council, the city administration erects a holiday tree, more commonly known as a Christmas tree. We celebrate joyously holidays in December, and yet, right now, in the middle of the holiest holiday of the year for Muslims, this community has not said a word. The city council could have said, "Happy Holidays." It could have said Ramadan Mubarak, because we have a large Muslim population in our community. Our community has changed gratefully. We have a lot of different people. If you go to Costco or Walmart on a weekend, we have a broad spectrum of individuals, both ethnic, racial, and religious. And yet, one of the largest international religions, our community has failed to wish them a happy holiday. As I speak, sunset is coming and the fast is about to end, and I'm hoping that members of our community who are Muslim come to realize there are many of us here who respect and honor these individuals, and yet, our community leaders have failed to acknowledge the importance. This isn't the first time. Last year it happened, and the year before. It's of the utmost importance that we show respect for every member of our community, and if the leadership of our community and the police department in our community fail to do that, then the common citizens, the major population of our community, and the youth of our community will not do that. So, I call upon all of you, as members of the city council, to acknowledge the importance of this holiday for so many members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Sue Stack?
Hello, everyone. I'm Sue Stack. I live on Antelope Road, and I'm here just to give you an update on Paradise Oaks Group Home. I have some great news. I was contacted a couple days ago from California State Licensing, and they let me know that Paradise Oaks Group Home has been cited for their staff. Now, it is my understanding, and I hope I'm correct, that they've been cited for the fact that they don't have adequate staff and that the staff that they have is not qualified for the level of kids that they've been bringing in. So, I'm excited that at least the California State Licensing is now aware and taking action against Paradise Oaks Group Home. And I was just updated by Special Operations Sergeant Morris that it looks like the Citrus Heights Council is working with the police department and issues that have been going on with Paradise Oaks Group Home, and I hope that you continue and that we can, you know, get something worked out with them. Now, I do have a question, though. I was told that Paradise Oaks is, they're in transition, and they're transitioning, transitioning from the group home type of operation that they've had into something a little bit different. And I wanted to find out if any of you council members were aware or knew what that was.
No, not sure what their plans are, and again, that's probably licensed through the state. Thank you for coming tonight and letting us know. We did get a report from Chad's boss, Lieutenant Dave Gutierrez, and not only have they made contact with Paradise Oaks, but the state as well. So, we know who all the players are now when something goes awry. And Lieutenant Gutierrez had a great idea. You know, usually the officers only go out there when they're dispatched and there's an issue, and we're going to make an effort to get out there as a role model and visit with these kids in a more positive light as well. And I'm hopeful that helps, you know, not just show up when the kid's been bad, but when there's opportunity to be a mentor and teach.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yay. That's wonderful. Okay, that's it.
Well, thank you.
I didn't have anything else. I just wanted to give you that update.
I'm glad we've been able to quiet things down.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it stays that way.
I hope so, too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. Anybody else wish to speak? If not, we'll move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar items six and seven.
I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Then we're approved. Okay, let's move on to the public hearing.
The next item is public hearing, item eight. The subject is annexation of Mariposa Creek subdivision into landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment districts ninety-eight oh two, zone three, and the recommendation is to adopt the resolution annexing Mariposa Creek subdivision into landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district ninety-eight oh two, zone three.
Mayor, council members. Stu Hodgkins, city engineer. The item before you tonight is related to the Mariposa Creek subdivision, and as you know, may know, back in October of 2016, the city planning commission approved the tentative map for Mariposa Creek, and it's a fifteen lot, single-family subdivision off of Antelope Road between Mariposa and Auburn Boulevard. Back on April fifteenth, one of the conditions of the map required the developer to annex into our landscape assessment districts to provide for long-term maintenance of the various landscape properties as part of this development. Back in April, the developer and the city recorded an agreement waiving the proceedings and consenting to annexation, and at this time, in accordance with the code, the city clerk mailed a ballot to the property owners and established tonight as the date and time for a public hearing on the matter. We are now asking that you, the council, open a public hearing and consider a public comment on the proposed annexation. Upon closing the public hearing, what we'll do is, we ask that you direct the city clerk to open the ballots at that time, and we will briefly continue this item while she takes the opportunity to do that. After the two budget-related items are considered, we'll come back, report back to you on the results of the ballot, and then discuss further action at that time.
Okay, perfect. So, with that, I will open the public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on this item, please come forward. See, when no one rushes to the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we don't need to vote on opening the ballots. I just need to instruct Ms. Van to please tabulate, open and tabulate. Okay, and so, we'll come back to this item, and with that, we can move on to the next item.
All right. The next item is regular calendar item nine. The subject is budget adoption for fiscal year 2018-19, and before you tonight are four resolutions that are being recommended for adoption.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager, along with Tammy Nosardi, our Finance Manager. And tonight, staff is presenting the recommended 2018-2019 annual budget for adoption. Prior to bringing this item before you tonight, staff has presented the CIP portion to the planning commission to ensure that the document is compliant with the general plan, met with the finance committee, and held a budget workshop. Tonight, staff is requesting the city council take formal action to adopt the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. The total budget for all funds is just under sixty million dollars and is comprised of four major fund groups. The general fund, the solid waste enterprise fund, special revenue fund, which includes community events fund, transit fund, stormwater drainage, street maintenance, assessment districts, and various grants. And then, the capital funds, which includes measure a construction fund, federal and state-funded projects, regional transit, general capital improvements, and capital replacements. The city's main operating fund is the general fund. The general fund for fiscal year 2018-2019 is balanced with a projected revenues of thirty-six point six million, available to fund expenditures of thirty-five point five million, with a slight projected surplus of about a hundred thousand dollars. The fiscal year 2017-2018 general fund budget, as adopted, anticipated an operating shortfall of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which was to be funded with reserve funds. As a result of revenues coming in slightly higher than expected and projected department savings mainly due to position vacancies, we are now projecting that we will end the current fiscal year with a surplus of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. General fund revenues for 2018-2019 are projected to be one point three million more than the general fund revenues anticipated for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. The majority of the projected increase is in sales tax at approximately two percent and motor vehicle licensing fees at about six percent. General fund expenditures are estimated to increase by one and a half million from fiscal year seventeen eighteen. It is important to note that the recommended budget does not include any changes in employee compensation, nor does it address historical shortfalls in funds needed for replacement items, building maintenance, and capital replacement. Staff is currently exploring options to address various operational and capital needs and will return to the city council with options and recommendations in the coming months. Another item of note is that staff is also not recommending that we make a contribution to the California Retiree Benefit Trust, otherwise known as OPEB. In fiscal year 2010-2011, the city council adopted to pre-fund other post-employment benefits through a Section 115 trust with CalPERS. The city has contributed to this fund every year, but this is not a requirement. Although we are projecting a slight operating surplus of just over a hundred thousand, it is anticipated this will change when staff returns to council with additional revenue options in the coming months. Staff is requesting the city council take action on the following four resolutions. The first resolution is to approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, along with the five-year capital improvement program. The second resolution will authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Greater Sacramento Area Economic Council in the amount of thirty-three thousand eight seventeen for membership for fiscal year 2018-2019. Funds for membership have been allocated in the proposed budget in the Economic Development Support Fund. The third resolution will authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sacramento self-help housing in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand four hundred for navigator services for the coming fiscal year. Funds for this program have been identified in the Economic Development Support Fund through approved community support funding and the Community Development Block Grant. The fourth resolution is adopting the amended pay rate schedule for the city of Citrus Heights. CalPERS requires the governing body to adopt a pay rate schedule anytime there are changes. The schedule does not represent any salary increases or compensation increases. The amended pay rate schedule includes one additional classification title and the removal of some inactive classification titles. And are there any questions?
Thank you, Rhonda. Any questions? Comments?
Ruth Ann, can...
Can I make one motion for all four?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Oh, that was quick. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. We have a budget for next year.
Yay.
Thank you very much. Oh, you got my...
I have one more. I do.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
Yes, I have one more.
Yeah, there's an updated thing on here.
Yes, so you should have received an updated handout. It's one of the attachments. It didn't change the numbers for the appropriation limit, but it was just, the wrong document was sent for the attachment, but it's, you have the corrected one, and that should replace the appropriation calculation sheet that you have in your packet.
Any questions on this?
Move the item.
Second.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
For the next item, we'll reconvene public hearing, item eight.
Oh, very good. That didn't take very long.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Amy Van City Clerk. So, I'd like to report the staff tabulated the ballots received and not withdrawn, and a hundred percent, a hundred percent were in support of the annexation of land to assessment district ninety-eight oh two, zone three, and zero percent were in opposition. Therefore, there is not a majority protest, and if the city council would like to take action, they're free to do so.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we take action? Then I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That does it for item, what was that, nine?
Eight.
Eight. That does it for eight. Now, we're going to jump back to ten.
Eleven.
Eleven now.
So, the next item is regular calendar, item eleven. The subject is approval of final subdivision map and subdivision agreement for Mariposa Creek, and the recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the final subdivision map and subdivision agreement for Mariposa Creek subdivision.
Mayor and council members, as a follow-on to our last item, number eight, with the annexation, we now ask that you consider next steps for Mariposa Creek's actual final map and a subdivision improvement agreement. The map creates, as we said earlier, a fifteen single-family residential lots, and we have reviewed the tentative map, the approval documents, and the final subdivision map, which is attachment A in your packet, and the agreement and all the required bonds and associated with that, which are attachment B. And at this time, we find the final map to be technically correct, and we're recommending adoption of the resolution moving forward with the subdivision agreement and approval of the final map for this project.
Well, I certainly like what they named the street. Turner Court. Any questions or comments for Stu?
Thank you. So, I will move approval of the final subdivision map and subdivision agreement as stated.
Second.
There's motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No, it's passing unanimously. Okay, and now I think I'm all caught up on the agenda. Next item, please.
The next item is department reports, item twelve. The subject is public information update from the city manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. We have tonight for you...
for them, because we want people to be able to get their news quickly and timely and have it be exciting and informative. That's the main thing that we're doing in June, but we've also taken a couple of other steps, because we are holistically looking at both our internal and external communication methods. And so we've, to that end, we formed a public information team. This is a team that gets together every month, and we're putting together articles, social media posts, different ideas about how to reach the public. And we're going to carry those out for the rest of the month. And so we've had one meeting. We're all excited to get this started, and we will kick it off in June with our e-newsletter. We've also added a couple of strategic planning goals just last week, and this addresses the next phase of our public information campaign, which is getting, increasing the number of the city's social media posts. We know that's an area in which we can increase our communication, and so we want to double the number of our posts, and we want to expand the city's social media platforms to include nextdoor.com. So that's our major, one of our major goals for the next six months. And all of this will incorporate, of course, the city's awareness campaign that will be front and center in our newsletter, and will include also our website redesign, which is shortly, which will shortly happen, as well as city banners. And so with all of this, in the next number of months, we are reaching the goal of communicating with the public more frequently and easily and timely. So if you have any questions about the newsletter or anything else, I'm available.
Any questions for Catherine? No, great job, and I think we'll actually reach a lot more people. Do you have to sign up, or will there also be a link on our website just to go directly to the Connections monthly?
We will have a poster on our website. You wouldn't have to sign up with your email. It would be an easy way to get it immediately to you, but everything that we're posting in the newsletter will also contain more information on the website. So the idea is in the newsletter, maybe you'll have a couple of sentences or a small paragraph as to what it is, but then you have a link straight in your email to get you right to the story with more detail on our website.
Perfect. Great job. Thank you. We don't need to vote on this, right? Okay, next item, please.
The next item is city manager items.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. As the mayor indicated at the beginning of the meeting, he would like me just to take a few minutes to really let the community know that we had, two days ago on Tuesday, a six-month strategic planning retreat. The city council has been doing this every six months since the beginning of cityhood. It is the manner in which we really set our objectives and lay out the work priorities and stay on task and focused for the work of the city, really on behalf of the citizens. And we really focus on taking a look at our strengths and our weaknesses, opportunities and threats that existed at any point in time during that six-month period, and then really, you know, highlight our goals and take a look at them, and then build objectives really underneath those goals. And our current three-year goals are to maintain fiscal stability, improve streets and infrastructure, diversify for a changing economy, enhance and expand public safety, and improve community vibrancy and engagement. And it is from these goals that we build really extensive accountable objectives, which is really the Bible that the staff uses to guide our work. It is the direction from the council on what they want done, and they're actionable. They have due dates, again, accountable, and it's really been a fantastic and consistent method for the city to do its work. So, you know, and myself, attending these for, you know, now almost thirteen years, I thought this session two days ago was one of our highlight sessions. I thought there was a lot of synergy and focus, and, you know, I thought the process was excellent. So we want the community to know that this document is on our website right now, and it has a number of things that we talked about, and the exercises that the council and senior staff undertook, all within the document, and that document will always remain there for reference. And then as we bring staff reports and as the council does our work throughout that period, we do reference and kind of check off those objectives as we go, so anyone who'd like to follow our progress of the strategic plan can do so that way. So thank you, mayor.
Thank you, and I see Catherine checked off a few items for the city manager's office.
Yes.
Thank you for the update. Next item.
The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Yeah, it's actually not a future item. I'd like it addressed tonight, and Amy, if, I'm going to call you to the microphone. Thanks. But it has to do with, you know, June fifth upcoming is the vote, and the county's changed it. I noticed tonight, as I drove up after five o'clock, two different people walking away from the front door with their pink envelope. So I just wouldn't mind if you would reiterate the hours at which people can drop off their vote here, and then I believe there's opportunities next weekend, not this weekend, but the following weekend, so isn't it?
Yes, it actually starts this weekend.
Oh, okay. Great.
So, starting Saturday, will this, the council chambers will convert to a vote center, and it will be open eight AM to five PM through the weekend and through the holiday, and then including election day. And on election day, they'll have extended hours from seven AM to eight PM. But beginning, early May, like May seventh, we have a drop box here at City Hall, and from the hours of eight AM to five PM, people can come and drop off their ballot in the drop box. But if they'd like to come this weekend, again, the vote center will be open.
So this weekend, including Monday, the vote center, which is this room here, eight to five, Saturday, Sunday of next weekend as well, and then the actual day of the election, the fifth, it's seven to eight here.
Correct. So for the consecutive days, eight, eleven days.
Great.
May twenty-sixth through June fifth.
Yeah, I just felt bad. I was going to actually say I could take and put it in the box, but I didn't want to take somebody's vote and put it in the box. But I felt bad, because they were, you know, they had to go home without voting that day, so, but thank you.
And they can always drop it in the mail.
Yeah, you can always drop it in the mail with two stamps.
Oh. Thank you, Ms. Van.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Any other items from council members? Next item, please. There are none, huh? Then we're adjourned.